Folks, if you're in the back, please find seats. All right, good evening, welcome to the Upland City Council meeting for Monday, September 8th, here at City Council Chambers. Madam Clerk, could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Mast.
Present.
Councilmember Breitling.
Present.
Mayor Protem Zuniga.
Present.
Mayor Veltto.
Present. All right, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, we do not.
All right. invocation is Reverend Yomota here? Hello, sir. All right, we'll have Reverend Keith Yomota from St. Mark's Episcopal Church will lead us in the invocation. I've asked Captain Cliff Matthews to lead us then in the pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand and remove your hats? Thank you.
On the occasion of Patriot Day, our national day of service and remembrance, we lift up all the victims of September 11th and of all acts of terror against the innocent. We pray for those killed in the Holy Land in Haiti. We pray for those killed in classrooms through gun violence. We give thanks for the heroic people who rushed to save, the first to respond, and the peacemakers. May their lives inspire us to work for justice, reconciliation, and peace in the world, our nation, and this city. And bless those who are the custodians of history and heritage, especially Anne Laura and the Cooper Museum, who bring people together to celebrate local artists, educate children, and to preserve the heritage of both the old St. Mark's Church building and the local Indigenous Gabrielino Tongva Indian tribe. Help this council and all of us together build up your beloved community and this compassionate and gracious city of Upland. In Jesus's name we pray.
Cliff, you ready? Please place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We do have presentation, Madam Clerk.
We have one this evening, Cooper Museum update by Anne Laura.
Thank you so much. Good evening, my name is Anne Laura, and I'm the Director of the Cooper Museum. We're located here in downtown Upland. A little bit about us and our mission. So our mission is to promote and understand the understanding and appreciation of the history and culture of Upland, Ontario Ranch and Kukamunga, San Antonio Heights, Mount Baldi, Chino, Montclair communities from 1880 to present, as well as our local Indigenous Gabrielino Tongva tribes. We are excited to be here and share a little bit about who we are and what we've been up to with the council and all of the guests here tonight. So where to find us? We've been in downtown Upland since 1997, so we are right on Second and A Street, right across from the MetroLink. We are open Fridays and Saturdays, noon to 5:00. We have donation-based admissions, so it's accessible to everyone in the community. And you can check out our new Instagram account that I'm doing the best I can on, so appreciate you all's patience, Juan. So what will you see when you come to the Cooper Museum? You'll see a variety of different displays showcasing the history of the area, including our sister city, George Chaffey, smudge pots. We have a great research library, we have lots of great yearbooks as well, so if you're looking for freshman pictures of folks, a great place to come find photos. We have Upland and Chaffey High School, a great collection of yearbooks that are very popular, Chaffey going all the way back to 1906. And we also have some great community partnerships. We hosted Sister City Visit recently over the summer. We also had some great history projects from Upland High School that we showcased in our, in our building, as well as we did a tour for a vocational program as well recently and hosted guests through there. So a little bit about our exhibits, we have our permanent collections and then our exhibits. Our last exhibit that we had was called Treasures of Our Town, was a collector's showcase. We had 23 different collectors with a variety of different items in the back gallery. We had 300, over 300 attendees that came through that exhibit, and we had a great reception that some of you were able to attend as well for that. Our current exhibit is our collective canvas. It showcases the work of 18 local artists that are from the area. Just opened up this past weekend and will run through November 8th, and you can come to the museum and check it out. And we will have an opening reception for that on October 4th, and we had a great opening weekend with strong attendance. Our next exhibit will be our Community Champions, and so our Community Champions will showcase nonprofits in the Upland, Ontario Ranch and Kukamunga area, and all the great work that they do showcasing ways that people can give their time, talent, and treasure to support these great organizations through the holiday season. That will run November 21st through January 24th. If anyone is involved with a nonprofit that would like a case, some space for that exhibit, you can reach out to me at director@coopermuseum.org for more information and how to be a part of that great exhibit that we have coming up. We also have some great events coming up at the museum. We're still kind of in brainstorm mode, but we're looking to do some, some fun things in the future, so follow us on social media and put your email address in on our website, and you'll get those notifications when we have dates and times for these things. We also will be launching our memberships as well, so our 2026 memberships will launch in October. Memberships allow you to support the museum, as well as get discounts on fun events like the ones you just saw. We have business partnerships as well, including things like access to our courtyard or boardroom. We'll have lots of different benefits at different levels, so you'll see our brochures around, I'm sure. I might even come by and stop by your business and say hello, and if you come into the museum, you'll be able to pick up a membership brochure and see which might be the best fit for you. We also have our courtyard rental as well, as well as our chapel, and our boardroom available for rent, so if anyone's looking for spots to host a great event in the downtown area, we have this area for you, and then our chapel's up on 18th Street. And a big thank you to our museum volunteers as well, they really help make the museum, museum run, everything from cleaning to organizing, folks with specific skillsets like Max Williams, who's an architect, went through our blueprints, anyone with those skillsets, we can always find a spot for you. And then if you're interested in volunteering with the museum, I do have some volunteer flyers, you can also email me directly, and we have opportunities for folks that are interested in becoming involved with the museum and learning a little bit more. If you volunteer for 30 hours, we have a free membership for you for the museum as well. And we can't wait to see you there. We're open again Fridays and Saturdays, noon to 5:00. I do tend to open the door a little early on Saturdays, so if you're around, just come by and see us. So thank you so much for your time, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
So what Anne doesn't realize is that we're going to give you also a certificate of recognition. Councilman Breitling and I met you several months back when we were wandering around and came into the Cooper Museum, and we just want to say as a council, thank you to you for your vision, for your energy, for your woodspack, for cleaning up the museum and making it a little bit more interactive and user-friendly. Not only thank you to you, but your boards, and some of your board members are here this evening, and it's always wonderful to have that as an asset in downtown, as we're revitalizing the downtown. It's a great anchor on preserving our history, and I know it's been a labor of love for you, so I'm going to come down and give you a certificate of recognition.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead. Let's go down and do a center.
She's going to bring her board.
Move on now, City Attorney.
We had no closed sessions, so I have no report on closed session.
All right, Madam Clerk, oral communications for items not on the agenda?
An agenda except for the public.
Gotcha.
This is time for any member of the public to comment on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the legislative body is requested to submit a speaker card to the city clerk at or prior to speaking. Public comments and questions for the purpose of hearing current matters of concern in our community in an open venue is encouraged. However, under the provisions of the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussion of items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, all comments will be taken under advisement or consideration in appropriate response or discussion at a later time. Speakers are requested to keep their comments to no more than three minutes. Speakers will be given five minutes during the public hearing. I have three speaker cards. First is John Schollenberger, followed by Sophia, Field Rep for Michelle Rodriguez.
How do I know when the timer's on?
It's on.
Okay. Good evening, City of Upland, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you.
I can't hear.
You can't hear? You can hear? Okay. You guys, well, first of all, okay, can you stop the clock, because they can't hear me?
We can't hear.
The microphone's on and the volume is all the way up.
It's all the way up. How about now? Can you hear me again?
It's cutting in and out.
Okay. Can I get my time back for three minutes?
We did.
I got a big mouth, maybe, can, can you guys hear that? I'm pretty loud. Okay, I'll just go ahead and do it this way. Good evening, Mayor and Council, City of Upland. It's a privilege to be before you tonight. I come to you, I'm John Schollenberger, I come to you from the beautiful city of San Bernardino. I'm a very proud resident of my city, and I'm very active in vocally in city government. As many of you may know, we have council races coming up in the first, second, and fourth wards, so many of us review the 460s of these candidates because we want to see who's putting money into these races, especially out there. And I got into the habit of doing it when Valdivia was in there, and I had a very good reason for doing it. So I went through the 460s of Theodore Sanchez in the first ward, and now oftentimes when I see donations on these things, some things raise a red flag, but on June 30th, 2025, the Upland Police Department Association, the POA, donated $5,900 to his reelection campaign. It raised a red flag for me. Why on earth would, would, would the Upland Police Department Association be involved in our city politics or donating any money to it? And a lot of people are going to be speaking to that at the podium. It raised a red flag with me. Now, the San Bernardino POA did the same thing, and we're going to be speaking to that, too. Why, why on earth would they be, to me? Okay, it might be legal, but it's a conflict of interest for me in, in that regard. Okay, where am I going with this? What's my purpose? Upland is a very well-run city, squeaky clean, you guys don't need, San Bernardino politics are no place to play hopscotch. It's, it's toxic there right now, and we're fighting hard to, to clean it up. I wanted to make this council body aware of this, and I just wanted, you know, to bring it to your attention, if I were a council person, I would want somebody to bring, especially with the situation that we have down there right now, it's not a good thing for Upland's name to be on any of it. You guys are a clean city with, with clean hands, and I've been coming here for years to spend my money and shop. You guys have a very nice city, paved streets, beautiful infrastructure, and everything else. Guys, look into this if it's of any interest to you, because I admire this city, and I don't want your name sullied in any of our politics down there. So thank you very much.
Next is Sophia, Field Representative for Assembly Member Michelle Rodriguez, followed by AJ Walker.
Hi, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council and City Staff. It's good to see you all. So I'm here to announce that we are going to be hosting our Women's Health and Resource Fair with a breast cancer awareness focus. It's going to be at the Montclair Senior Center. The address for that is 511 Benito Street in Montclair. It's going to be on October 18th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We will be offering free mammogram, sorry, that word is hard for me to see, free breast cancer screening, along with other health screenings and resource booths, so I hope I can see everyone there. Thank you.
Sorry, next is AJ Walker, followed by Jeff.
Jeff.
Hello?
Hello?
All right, Mr. Mayor, thank you, sir. City Council and Ms. Mouse, thank you in advance.
I'm getting it up right now.
He turned it off. Yeah. Look, your document.
It's not working.
Anybody see it? Okay.
Move it up a little bit.
Okay.
All right, thanks again. Once again, AJ Walker, Navy retired, own Sunella LLC, and we enhance or look to enhance the Baldiview Dog Park. The enhancement comes in the way of Doggy Deli, as you see there, it's a vending machine with a custom shed that provides high-quality, American-made products and items for your Baldiview parkgoers and their human parents. Sample list of some of the customer, okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Here's a sample list. On? Okay, thank you. Sample list of some of the human, correction, dog products that we would offer at the dog park, your bowls, your balls, your park accessories, as you see there. On the flip side, of course, your human products, staples all the way around, your sodas, your water, your Gatorades, et cetera, et cetera. Now, this was tested, this being the Doggy Deli once again, prior to your major renovation at Baldiview Park. Some of you may have even been there. This is a family that reached out to me recently on the left side, and then on the right side, of course, is your great Parks Director, Ms. Jessica Gunjarra. All right. Once again, some of you may have even signed this petition, if you will, wanting Doggy We do operate all across the nation, most notably, we have a few locations in Raleigh, North Carolina. Also, we expect to be open in Florida soon, and then we have Orange County, the Orange Dog Park just south of here. Couple reviews, if you, you probably can't see on the, on the green highlighted line, but hit the vending machine and recharge, there's even a vending machine serving dog toys and treats, et cetera, et cetera. Some other reviews, and also, we intend to operate or in conjunction with the Upland Park Shelter to provide no-cost donation to that shelter. On the right side is Dix Park Conservancy, which is a park in Raleigh, North Carolina, which we also support through a monthly donation. Some sample sales, there's some random days throughout the summer, as you see, this highlights the popularity of the deli, $72 one day, $40 the next, $80.
Okay. Why don't you leave that with the city clerk?
Yes, sir.
Over here? All right? Time's up.
Time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Jeff, followed by Garrett Mullenow.
Jeff? Apparently Jeff's not here.
What about Garrett Mullenow?
Garrett? Garrett Mullenow? Is this Garrett walking up? Thank you.
Good evening, City of Upland staff, dispense and residents. Please forgive me for my nervousness and short narrative due to my speech impediments I have. That's right. I have, I have a speech impediment. I'm supplying a 26, is that there? I'm supplying a 26-page packet for all. I do have a problem with my speech. I'm supplying a 26-page packet for all the dais, and, and you'll all read that at your, at your leisure, I don't expect you to read it right now. Meanwhile, I'll show you a short video of what I'm pertaining to from my phone. So that's all the speech I really need to talk about, I'll just show you the video right now.
This is a small example of what I have to deal with on a daily basis.
Right next to my house. It's all residential right here, but down at the end of the street is a trucking hub. Notice they take two lanes to turn, turning into oncoming traffic, safety, security, and general noise is out of the question. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Last call for Jeff.
We're going to take a, let's do this, we're going to take a recess, we're going to take a recess and get this fixed, okay? Let's just take a recess, let's get to it, we're going to fix it, okay? Thank you. In the back, can you hear it in the back?
It's not working.
Test, one, two, in the back. Chief, can you go to the back and tell me if you can hear it? But I mean back in the back. Check, one, two.
Test, test, test.
I'm hearing you, I'm hearing you. We hear you up here.
This one's working now. Test, one, two, one, two, test.
Test, test.
All right, let me see if I can explain it to them.
Can you guys hear back there?
Can we bring this?
Back, can you hear? No? Okay, went off again.
Okay.
Can you hear my shadow or my own noise here, but...
Let me, let me explain. Okay. I'm going to go out and talk to them. Can we bring those speakers in from outside and put them here?
What's that?
Could we bring the outside speakers in? Oh, it blew an amp.
I got everybody inside, we turned off the outside ones. Test, one, two, one, two, test, can you hear me?
We're here, you fine up here.
No, but over here, it, there's a bad connection. It's a bad connection with this thing. Keeps going off and on.
Let's see if we can put these up here. Let's try this.
Test, test.
Yeah, we're aware of that, it's, um...
Test, one, two, one, two, test, test, test. You guys hear in the back? Hear in the back?
We believe, we believe that an amp might have blown, and we don't have a backup amp right now. That's what we think happened, so...
Sounds about right.
Yeah. So what about that portable sound system we use today outside? Do we have that anywhere? Recreation has it? Hold on, how about now? Are you guys hearing me now in the back? Okay, somehow it's come on. Can you hear me in the back now? Okay. Well, apparently the amp wasn't broken. They had to turn it on, how's that? What do they say? Unplug it and plug it back in.
Test, 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 can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So the best bet is please, when you come up to this thing, I notice when people are talking and they do this, it goes in and out, so please don't touch. Speak, don't touch. Don't put stuff here. Hold.
Oh, we'll tell you.
It'll be okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Jeff, come on back up. Okay, we're back in, we're back in, Carlos, let's give Carlos a second to get back. Are we still good in the back? Jim, can you hear me? Jim Flock, can you hear me? Okay.
Test, test, all right.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Gilmore, living man in Upland who reserves all rights. I'm going on record and let the record reflect that I am here tonight because of a pattern of misconduct by the Upland Police Department that threatens the rights and safety of those in our city. November 2022, I was pulled over for allegedly running a red light, I challenged Officer Swink and offered to show him a recording, he didn't care. Officer Alvin was also on scene and didn't stop Swink from his actions, instead he chose to add another violation. This was an unlawful stop. Filed a formal complaint, but it was never, it was never answered. I emailed the chief and was mostly left to, I was mostly left to feel unimportant. Approximately May of 2024, another citizen came before this council and said the same thing happened to him, his complaint was also ignored. I even reached out to the city attorney, instead of addressing the issue, his main concern was that he had to be paid. That response shows where the priorities are, not accountability, but money. In April 2023, I was at a Bank of America where they closed my son's account, took over $5,000, and said it would be at least six weeks before the funds are available. The manager, Melanie, placed a complaint on her own bank and said it would be three to five business days to get results, and she invited me to come back and check the progress. The fifth day of B of A, the fifth day of B of A called up UPD, lied about my behavior, and 25 minutes later, after being told to wait, UPD showed up. I was free to go from that scene, only to be chased down, pulled over, placed at gunpoint and taser point, extracted, roughed up and injured with absolutely no resistance. I was falsely arrested and imprisoned for almost 24 hours. The district attorney later issued a turn-down letter without apology, the red light one also was dismissed. September 2023, UPD raided my property using unfounded details to get a search warrant and ransack our home. UPD violated our rights again and violated their own policies as well as other penal codes. These are not isolated mistakes, they reveal a systemic pattern of retaliation, harassment, and violations of law and policy. High turnover in the department leaves Upland with a constant flow of inexperienced officers, and the lack of proper training makes abuses even more likely. It starts at the top, if our chief cannot get his department to follow policy or the, or at the least discipline those that do, why do we have them at over half a million dollars a year? I want this council to know, because complaints were ignored and retaliation continued, a lawsuit has been filed, I had no other choice. I'm asking this council, shoot, to ensure the citizen complains... to ensure the citizen complaints are investigated and answered, strengthen officer training on constitutional rights, hold both the department and city leadership accountable for retaliation and misconduct. This is bigger than me. It's about whether residents can trust their police and their city government. I urge you to take action before more lives are harmed. Thank you respectfully, Jeff Gilmore.
The rest of the speakers, can you hear me? The rest of the speakers are going to be called during the public hearing.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move on now to the, uh, let's go to the consent calendar. All right, items, do I have a motion to approve? You want to pull one, Shannon? A motion to approve 10 A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K?
I want to pull E as in elephant.
Pull E as in echo? As in? E is an echo. E also? So nobody else, Carlos?
No.
Rudy, anything? E. All right, so let's have a motion then for items A, B, C, D, F, G, H, I, J, and K. I'll move, so moved by Councilmember Garcia, second by, second by Councilmember Brightling. Let's vote.
Actually, Councilmember Brightling was pulling it as well, and I think, did you have remarks written down or? Okay. Councilmember Brightling wants to hear from the chief if you want to come up. We did, what we're doing is pulling it just so we can acknowledge the Upland Police Foundation. We've had an anonymous donation of $107,534, and I think that's astronomical, and hopefully this anonymous person here through the grapevine, how grateful we are, and if chief wants to speak a little bit to the Upland Police Foundation and how they utilize it, that would be great. Thank you, chief.
Absolutely. So this year, the... Don't touch. This year, the foundation took it upon themselves to start fundraising to replace our second canine. So as you know, Rudy retired, we had the ceremony here, so that we're looking at replacing that dog and the equipment associated with it. So the total cost of the canine is approximately $107,000 and some odd change, which is what they were working on raising, which includes the dog, the vehicle, outfitting the vehicle, the training involved for that police officer and the dog, and so on and so forth, all the other accoutrements that come with it. So we did have an anonymous donor, legitimately anonymous. They did not want anyone to know who they were through a foundation, donated the total amount for the canine program to our foundation. So now that we have the funds, we've got to work on finding a vehicle, which takes a little bit of time, fortunately not that many police cars out and about, and we have to get it outfitted and stuff like that. The beauty of it is, we hopefully should have our second canine by the beginning of this coming year. So it was outstanding, and the foundation continues to raise money. They've been around for well over 28 years. They have three large buckets they put money into. One of them is officer training, to make sure that officers get above and beyond the basic training that's required by post. The other one is equipment, for equipment that officers may want to get that's outside of what the department offers. And they do youth scholarships for youth programs, up to $300 and $250 per child. So if an officer runs into, and that has to go through an officer, so it isn't that somebody can just say, please sponsor my kid. This is, these are kids throughout the community the officers encounter that they feel would benefit from being in Little League or being in Pop Warner or just playing high school football, whatever it is, and then they can fill out the paperwork, and then they'll sponsor that child through that program.
Yeah, such a great foundation, and now you have media presence because the world works in a media format, so the foundation now has Facebook and Instagram click links so that you can easily donate to the foundation, as well as their upcoming fundraiser that the board's putting on, which is on Topgolf. So you're welcome to read it on the dot com or any of the formats for the media, so that this is the, the extra layer of sometimes we can't meet the budget, and so we want to have those extra items, and the foundation always steps up to cover our officers. So thank you for that, and thank you for sharing.
It absolutely does, and they do a tremendous job. Truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, folks, if you have an opportunity to attend the Police Officers Foundation's Topgolf event, they're still looking for sponsors for that event. It is a great event. It's usually on a Sunday afternoon. Sunday, October 5th? Yeah, I get pressed pretty hard for some reason to get that thing done. I don't know if it's maybe the person I live with. But no, we're, we, it's a great organization, great foundation. For someone to step up anonymously and donate $107,000, over $107,000, says a lot about what goes on in our city and our PD, and that's indicative of what the chief, Marcelo Blanco, has done under his leadership over the last few years. So chief, thank you, and thank your team. Appreciate all the efforts they do in making up on a safe place.
Can I get a motion?
I'll go ahead and move that.
We need to vote on this.
We got a motion from Councilmember Miles for approval, second from Councilmember Brightling. Let's vote. All right, let's, uh, move on to item 11.
Item 11A is the city's...
Okay, hold on before we start this. All the students that are here, please go out the back. You'll see a gentleman out there, Mr. Parker, he will sign your papers, and we can get you out of here, okay? All the students that are here right now, just go right out the back door, and Mr. Parker will take care of your documentation. Test, test. Guys, all the way outside. Just go all the way outside. I need to make a statement for the start. How many cars do we have, Carrie?
14. And someone just asked.
Should we go, can I go to three for? Who want, they want a picture with who? Come on up here, come on up here real quickly, or we'll get you done. You're gonna do an, you're gonna do an ussy? Just turn around and do an ussy. You know what ussy is, right? That's us. The other one, if you do it by yourself, it's called a lonely. All right. All right, thank you, guys. Go UHS. She's a celebrity. All right, you ready? Yes, come on. They get extra credit for this getting their picture taken with the mayor. I know, that was the, oh, wait a minute. You're, you're class of 2026, so, right? Class of 2025 was my peeps. That was my 50-year reunion from Upland. All right. Okay. Hey, before we start this here public hearing, I want to make, I want to put something on record so that there is no misinformation being put out, and it's been put out on social media. I'm not on social media as much as I used to be. I have much more important pressing things. I do not represent the seller of that property. I do not represent the buyer of that property. I am not the developer on that property, and I do not represent the developer on that property. Okay? That's a matter of record. And those that are putting that information out there, don't believe them. Okay? You understand, I'm not the property on Arrow Highway. I am not representing the seller. I do not represent the buyer, and I do not represent the developer. And the one, the person that accidentally said it actually apologized to me for saying it. I actually contacted the first developer and chastised them for sending out a memo to the residents saying that the City of Upland had approved that project. So I want to let you know that I have nothing to do with representing the buyer, seller, or the developer on that property. I'm the mayor of Upland, and my role, just like anyone that's up here, is to vote for, vote against, make recommendations or table something. Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Before we enter a presentation, I just have some introductory remarks. The housing element rezoning program before you is necessary action to get the city's housing element certified by the state. The housing sites inventory that's in the housing element contains the subject properties and has gone through many iterations since we began this process back in 2020. We've gone back and forth with ACD on the housing sites and believe that the proposed rezoning program that is before you provides the least intrusion on the community as a whole. Also, we developed two strategies that substantially reduced the number of properties that would have been affected by rezonings. One is the creation of a transit overlay zone over much of the area between Benson Avenue and Central Avenue, north and south of 9th Street. This area is within a half mile of the Montclair Transit Station, where higher density is appropriate. The overlay zone permits a density of up to 41 dwelling units per acre if a developer assembles one or more acres to develop housing. An overlay zone adds a special layer of planning regulations on top of the underlying zoning without creating properties from being made non-conforming. We were able to obtain 1,719 dwelling units by applying this transit overlay zone in the area. The other strategy was adding an ADU bonus program where properties that are 15,000 square feet or larger can have an additional detached ADU. We were able to add an additional 200-plus on top of what ACD allows, or ADUs to apply towards the RINA numbers. With that, I'll turn it over to Joshua Winter. He's our senior planner and project planner for a presentation. Also here is our consultants from Micro Baker International, who assisted us with the housing element update. That's Dan Wery and Shannon Luska. And then also to my left is Laurlee Ferris, our planning manager. So with that, Joshua has a presentation to provide.
Okay. Thank you. Everyone hear me? Yes? So tonight before you is the, um, the implementation of the city's, the City of Upland's six-cycle housing element. So the housing element was adopted in 2024. It was conditionally, it was conditionally approved by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, back in 2024. So now we're bringing it forward to receive full approval from HCD. So the project brought before you tonight includes several related actions, including modifications to the general plan land use designations, changes to zoning districts for parcels on the sites inventory of the housing element, text modifications to the general plan into the zoning code, as well as some modifications to the downtown specific plan, as well as the sequel findings required for the project. Tonight's action does not result in any construction or any project approvals. It's only for the underlying zones. All we're doing is creating additional housing opportunities on sites throughout the city. Each project that comes forward on these rezoned sites will be subject to the city's entitlement process, so it'll go through a development review. It'll be publicly noticed if required, and we'll apply applicable sequel standards to all those, all those future developments that come forward. A little bit of background, the housing element has been a required element in the city's general plan since 1969. Every eight years, California cities are required to update that housing element. The current six-cycle saw a large allocation increase across all cities in the state, with the city receiving an allocation of 5,686 units. The city began drafting the housing element in 2019 with, and finally received that in a letter of conditional compliance in June of 2024. In order to receive final certification from the state, the city's required to do two things. The first is to adopt the revised housing, housing element, which the city council did last September. And then the second thing is to adopt all the zoning changes identified in the housing element sites inventory, which includes 261 parcels, and then sending all that information to HCD to receive final certification. Final certification is critical. It ensures Upland remains in compliance with state housing law, protects us from any future legal or financial risks, and helps preserve our access to state funding. And just briefly on...
Josh, Josh, let's back up one. I wanted, I wanted to make sure we're clear with the residents. The planning period allocation is not set by the City of Upland, is it?
It's not, no.
Is it set by who?
So it goes down through the state, down through the, uh, the, not the county, the county wide agencies. So we're in the Southern California Association of Governments, the SCAG region.
Right.
So it came through this, through SCAG, and they dispersed the units that way.
And that doesn't mean we build it.
It does not mean we build it, we only provide the opportunity.
Right, and if we don't?
If we don't, then there's a lot of potential risks involved, including losing local control and state funding and all sorts of things.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Josh?
Yes.
Really quick, during your presentation, you, you mentioned remaining in compliance. I thought, currently not in compliance, correct?
So currently, we don't have a certified housing element, so we're not in compliance. We're conditionally compliant.
Okay.
Based on adopting the rezonings that are required.
And this started in 2021, didn't it?
Yes.
And how many times have we submitted?
We went through five drafts.
And every time we drafted, they didn't like it, did they?
There was additional comments, or the, or what we addressed in the previous comment letter wasn't addressed enough, that kind of thing. So we went through quite a, a process to try to get to the point where our housing element document was acceptable, and then that's what the council approved in 2024.
And, and how they come up with this is based on housing, based on population projections, employment?
So what happens is it starts from the state. And the state had, had indicated that they, at the time, for this next cycle, that there were, the state was in need of 3 million homes. And so with that, they divided that up amongst the metropolitan planning organizations. So the, the one we're in is the SCAG region, it's the six-county region, LA, Orange, San Bernardino, Riverside, Puro County. So SCAG was issued 1.3 million dwelling units to divide among the 190-plus cities within the SCAG region. So SCAG goes through a year-long process to decide the methodology to use on how to distribute those units amongst the 190-plus cities. And so what you have indicated and other factors go into deciding the methodology and how they distribute it to the various cities. From that process, we were given 5,686 dwelling units to account for in terms of having the zoning and land to, to reach that RINA number. And that is fairly significant because the last cycle, fifth cycle, our RINA number was only 1,500. So this six-cycle is unprecedented, and we're not the only one. A lot of cities were hit very hard with a lot of dwelling units to account for. And for us, in a largely built-out city, giving of 5,686 units was a, a chore to try to come up with the land and zoning to achieve that. And so the two strategies that I mentioned earlier that we employed, that accounted for about 1,900 units, which reduced that number down substantially. If we hadn't come up with those, that strategy, then there would have been more properties on this list that we would have to rezon.
So Bob, this is, we're gonna be, once we approve this, we're gonna be four years from now to do it again, aren't we?
Right.
So four years from now, that number could come back at?
It's hard to say what, what will happen. Again, the methodology to distribute those units changes every cycle. And they may, because a lot of cities did not get their housing element approved after a few revisions, and also did not get the rezonings done well into the eight-year cycle, they may account for some of that in the next cycle. But it's hard to determine because that methodology changes every cycle.
So you've done this before for other cities, correct?
Yeah, I've done, this is my, I've done three housing element updates.
Has the numbers ever gone down?
No.
Okay. So if it's went from 1,500 to 5,600 units, that's not good, is it? That's not a good sign.
Right. Well, you know, the next cycle, the seventh cycle, would cover, you know, 20, 20, was it 2030 to 2038? It's hard to say what that methodology is going to be.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so just briefly on how we selected the sites. So selection was based on a few things, developer interest, site conditions such as age or underutilization, so there's not a lot of buildings on a project site or things like that, proximity to transit jobs, schools, or other services. jobs, schools, or other services, and the absence of major constraints like hazards or incompatible uses, or there's large amounts of noise, or some sort of other environmental factor that would prevent the construction of housing. Not every single site meets each criteria outlined, but each site has a realistic redevelopment potential. Also, we had to consider the AFFH, or the Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing, which basically requires the city to distribute the sites throughout the city and not consolidate them in one particular area. So with that, we'll go ahead and take a look at the actual changes that we're going to be making, first starting off with some of the, the actual land use changes, and then we'll take a look at some of the text changes that we're going to make. And there's quite a few parcels, so I'll try and keep it brief for each one. So the first, first change we're going to do is the proposal of a new zoning district. This is going to be the RM40 zoning designation, designation that allows for 40 dwelling units per acre. So it could allow for a variety of multifamily housing types, townhomes, apartments, things like this. The three sites include the industrial zone land near Central Avenue on the left-hand side of the screen here. And then in the middle of the screen, you have some land off San Antonio and Ninth Street. It's currently BRMU, and we're going to change that to RM40. And then finally, the Housing Authority site on Foothill Boulevard, 500 feet north of Foothill Boulevard on Campus Avenue. It's been there for quite a while. It's currently zone multifamily residential, and we're going to just upzone that to multifamily residential, 40 to the acre, since the Housing Authority has redeveloped projects in the past. This is a potential site for that to continue. The, the, the second 40 dwelling unit to the acre proposal, which Bob kind of mentioned already, is the creation of a transit overlay zone. So the TO zone is going to support higher-density housing near the Montclair Transit Center. The overlay does not include any changes to the underlying zone, so we don't create any legal nonconforming issues. But we're just creating additional opportunity to create transit-oriented development near a transit center, up to a 40 dwelling unit to the acre site. And this is the site where we captured many, many of our units. So most of the area is south of the Pacific Electric Trail, but we did include a small portion north of the Pacific Electric Trail, which is highlighted in purple in the top left. And the density allowance on that portion of the sites, of the, of the transit overlay district is only going to be 30 dwelling units to the acre, since it is somewhat closer to some existing residential.
Josh, what was the zoning going to be then on Benson, just between the Pacific Electric Trail and Ninth Street? That one, those parcels that just adjoin the higher RM40? What are those zoning going to be on those then?
Which ones specifically?
Just to the right of that.
Over here?
Yeah. What are those going to be?
Those are currently BRMU, I think, still, and they're going to remain that way.
So they're not part of the overlay zone? The parcels that you have, that Josh has highlighted, that is, those are going to be part of the, of the overlay zone. The parcels are not highlighted. They'll just remain the same zoning, which is business residential mixed use.
And we did it that way to allow for the commercial frontages to remain on the existing, you know, Central Avenue and Benson since they're-
I got this. More for commercial.
Right, yeah. So that was the intent there. There's existing commercial centers on some of those areas and existing commercial buildings that can remain or be redeveloped in the future.
All right. Thank you.
But you can still do residential on them, too.
You still could, correct?
You still could, yeah.
Thank you.
So some of the building types, just to take a quick look at, at them. Potential developments include mixed use, mid-rise apartments, three to four stories tall is typically what we see. You could have a variety of, of unit types, as I mentioned, apartments, townhomes, multifamily housing that features shared open space, reduced setbacks, reduced parking, things like that. The next strategy was to allow for some additional density at the 30 dwelling unit to the acre metric. So the first proposal increases the maximum density within the business residential mixed use zone. So that zoning district is, is across the city. There's a few areas in town that include it. So right now, you're permitted up to 20 dwelling units to the acre. So with the changes, it's just a text amendment within the code, and that will go up to 30 dwelling units to the acre. The area on the screen that you're looking at is south of Ninth Street, east of campus, kind of on the outskirts of downtown. There's some under, underutilized properties there, some existing multifamily that are going to be able to utilize the 30 dwelling units to the acre. Now, this is, the next strategy was just to change some of our existing properties from a lower density, upzone them to a RM30 zoning designation. So the first one on the screen, the planning commission at the last city council meeting was a bit concerned with this one. So it was originally intended to be an RM40 designation. That's now been reduced to an RM30 designation. So that's what's planned for this property as of now. And then there are a couple other properties that are going to be upzoned from RM20, which they are currently, to RM30. So again, over on Ninth Street, north of Ninth, this is over by Bowden Hammer and 11th Avenue. There's some properties here that are underutilized and can, will be eligible for more density. And then at the northwest corner of Grove Avenue and Arrow Highway, so there's a large vacant area there, and then a commercial fueling station. So those were rezoned to RM20 in 2015. So we're just upzoning that area. A couple more, northeast, northeast corner of Campus Avenue and 14th Street, going from public use to RM30. There's currently a nursery there. The property owners expressed interest in some senior housing potentially. Southeast corner of Seventh Street and 11th Avenue, RM20 to RM30. So this was also rezoned from light industrial to multifamily residential, allowing 20 units to the acre in 2015. That's increasing to 30 to hopefully encourage residential development. And we've actually, in the middle parcel, the city had approved a few years ago now, a townhome-style apartment project had about 20 dwelling units to the acre. The, a couple more, at the northeast corner of Claremont Boulevard and Blanchard Place, we're going from single-family residential RS 7.5 to RM30. So there's some single-family homes here in a lot of underdeveloped area, and it's close to the Claremont Colleges, so it could benefit from some multifamily uses. In the northwest corner of 11th Avenue and Eighth Street, also going from single-family residential along the frontage and light industrial to multifamily residential. Also going to RM30, this is a property next to St. Joseph's Church off Campus Avenue, north of 11th Street, south of Foothill. It's currently zoned RM20. It's going to RM30, and it's actually going to match the properties across the street where the Mesa Court Apartments are and some other existing apartments. At the southwest corner of Central Avenue and 11th Street, so this is south of 11th Street, across the street from existing condo project, existing multifamily residential. So this is going from commercial-industrial mixed use, which does allow for residential, to just the sole-use residential. So some current projects at that density, or approximately at that density, that were constructed recently, or one was constructed, one was approved. At the top is the Mesa Court Apartments, so that was approved at about 25 dwelling units to the acre. So that's a three-story townhome-style apartment project. And then the City Ventures Project, which is almost done with construction, it's at 30 dwelling units to the acre right here in downtown. So you could expect those types of projects at, at that density in those areas. The last strategy was to include some 20 dwelling unit to the acre properties, increasing the zoning. So the first one to look at is at the southwest corner of Benson and Ninth Street. We had originally proposed to go from light industrial to multifamily residential, 20 dwelling units to the acre. But we did have some discussions with this, with this property owner, and you may have seen some correspondence with the property owner. And they were concerned that there could be some potential nonconformities happening from the, from changing their property to RM20. So instead, we are proposing to modify the, the zoning from light industrial to business residential mixed use. That way, you're still permitting light industrial uses, and we're also permitting residential uses. So they're going to be permitted to go 30 dwelling units to the acre or continue the land use. That way, the property owner doesn't run into any issues, and we're still able, still able to account for those units. And you can see on the, the zoning map, so this is just a snip of the zoning map, the property highlighted in red, the BRMU and the purple and orange is kind of in that area already, so we're just kind of continuing that same land use.
I just wanted to add one thing. We, we did talk to ACD today regarding that change, and they seemed to support that change. They were going to run it up the chain and let us know, but they were supportive of that change, as long as we didn't downzone the property to lower units. But they were, they were, seemed to be okay with taking the BRMU and applying it to this
So the last property in the RM20 zone is going to be RS 7.5 to RM20. So there's some existing properties here. It's on the south side of East Ninth Street, between 12th Avenue and 13th Avenue. It's just some existing single families surrounded by multifamily currently. Some of these property owners have expressed interest in doing some additional units, so we're going to give them the opportunity to do so. Some current projects approved at that, approved and constructed at about that 20 dwelling unit to the acre include the, the Bowden Hammer Project off Ninth Street. So this is a townhome project, about 15 dwelling units to the acre. That's the frontage off Ninth Street there. That's called the Sage at Ninth Project. This is the Seventh Street Project I had mentioned earlier, 1252 East Seventh. That's right at 20 dwelling units to the acre. It included two- and three-story townhome-style apartments. And then one similar single-family style is the Rose Glen specific plan. That was about 13 dwelling units to the acre. Okay, so the, the lower-density projects that we're proposing include the southwest corner of Campus Avenue and 21st Street. This was also a recommendation that the PC, the planning commission made to go from the RS4 to permit the RS10. So the RS4 would have allowed for a 4,000-square-foot lot size, single-family homes. The planning commission here, in the concerns of the surrounding neighbors, proposed that that go from RS20 to RS10, allowing 10,000-square-foot lots. And then also at the west end of 24th Street, the proposal is still to go to RS4 from RS, RS20 to RS4. And a current project, approximately 10 dwelling units an acre, was the recently approved via Serrana Project. That was about 7.1 dwelling units to the acre. So something like this could be built on a, on a, on a project that was a 4,000-square-foot lot project. The 10,000-square-foot lot, it's more of a standard, typical, single-family subdivision you'll see north of Foothill Boulevard pretty, pretty regularly. So some of the text amendments, I'll just go over these briefly. The first one is the general plan text. So we do need to create that multifamily high designation. It's already on our land use map for the general plan, but there was no, no mention of it in the actual general plan documents, so we've included that. And then we're also including the, upping the mixed use, the business residential mixed use density from 20 to 30. The zone changes. So the modifications we're making are going to be to Upland Municipal Code, Chapter 1704, 1705. That's going to be to eliminate things like the requirement for conditional use permit or administrative use permit in all the, in all the residential zoning districts, just because that's, we're not permitted to require any discretionary permits. We're going to insert new development standards for the RM40 zone. So those are going to include pretty similar development standards to the existing RM30 zone with the increased density. And then the elimination of use permits, which I mentioned. And then there are some additional programs that we do have to implement in the housing element, but those will come back later. The other zone text amendments that we're doing are going to be to 1709, which is the overlay zones in our municipal code. So we're going to add a new section for that transit overlay zone. It's going to include some density requirements, some lot size requirements to qualify for that density. So we're not just upzoning 240. You actually have to combine some of these lots because we have a lot of small lots. So we want to see some lot consolidation, some reduced setbacks, reduced open space that are consistent with the downtown specific plan, just to allow for more of that transit-oriented development style, and then also reduce parking. Now, the, real quick, the historic downtown Upland specific plan, there are two changes. One is to the southeast corner of Ninth Street and Fifth Avenue, and we're going to change that existing auto repair business. It's going to change from Pleasant View District to Citrus Transportation to allow for multifamily residential. As the Citrus Transportation abuts this property on the south side, so it'll allow for additional housing opportunity. And then we're also going to change the density within the multifamily senior housing zone to go from 25 dwelling units to the acre to 40, and this would increase the zoning, the density permitted on some city-owned property to allow us to perhaps market that in the future. So you'll see here the specific plan. This is the project that was approved south of the property on Ninth Street, so you could expect to see something like that, although we would come back pretty quickly here after this approval to add some special development standards to that parcel, so the Ninth Street frontage isn't impacted. And then just real quick, here's a quick look at our, what our RINA allocation was, and then what we're providing. Okay, so we have, when, when we're given the 5,686 units, it's broken down into different income categories, very low, all the way up to above moderate. So when we're identifying sites, what HCD wants us to do is account for a buffer, because inevitably, when you plan for certain housing income categories to be built on this particular site, that may not happen in the future. So you want that buffer so you don't, so you're not missing, reducing any of your RINA allocation, and you're still providing the, the sites necessary. So with those few modifications I mentioned, the one to the property on 21st, the one to the property on Arrow, and the one to the property on Ninth Street, we have reduced our buffer slightly to 12.7% from 15%. Now, that's a buffer we want to maintain because we are going to get some projects here that may not develop to include the low, the very low housing types that we've accounted for. So in us maintaining that buffer, we're not going to run into any no-net loss issues, which could require us to come back and rezone property or something like that, if, if, if we're not able to account for all the units that we're obligated to provide for. And then with the last slide here, so for a SEQA for this project, there's a couple things. The city certified our program EIR for the general plan in 2015, and in addition to that, we prepared, Michael Baker actually prepared the addendum to the ARR, EIR, and found the proposed housing element rezonings would not create new significant impacts or increase the severity of existing ones. And then just recently, a few months ago, Senate Bill 131 was approved and provides a SEQA exemption for housing element-related rezonings that implement and adopted housing element. So we have the addendum, and then we're also, the state issued that exemption. So those are both exemptions that we're using for this project. And then that's the end of my presentation, the recommendations on the screen here, and that's to adopt a resolution approving the addendum and the SEQA exemption, and then approving the general plan modifications, and then holding the first reading by title only, waiving further readings for the zone change, and the same thing for the specific plan amendment. And that's it.
Good. All right. Counsel, do you want to have a hold of public hearing first? Go ahead. What do you want to do?
Just clarification for, for the public as well. So the other rumor that I want you to address also means that as we're, we're looking at this rezoning, there's been conversations, I've had with folks telling me that we're going to kick them out in 10 years from their property and just change it, or eventually we're going to do eminent domain, which I've said is not true, but I want them to hear it from you guys as well, too.
Yeah, if you can get that slide. With respect to eminent domain, redevelopment is gone. At the time, redevelopment was around. You could take private property for private use. You cannot longer do that. We can only take private property for public use. So we're not going to take people's property. This is just a rezoning. I don't believe there's, there might be some properties that might be nonconforming as a result of the rezoning. Under our amortization schedule in our zoning code, which all zoning codes have, there's a transition when a property is made nonconforming. With respect to a use that was conforming and then became nonconforming with the change in the zoning code, that use can stay there for 10 years. And I believe any buildings on there can stay for 40 years, but they would have to be reused on what use is allowed in that zone. And so I think that addresses your questions, right?
Counsel member, Breitling?
Bob, is it, is it on?
Hold on, I think Shannon's up.
Regarding the 10 years, is it, it's 10 years, and then it can be reviewed again after that, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, that's a good point. We did that with one property, and only one. But yes, the property owner could request a hearing, and that's an administrative hearing before Development Service Director, which is obviously myself. And, and then the city attorney will sit to advise, and they can request an additional time period. There's nothing specific in the zoning code that says how much time you can request. It leaves it open-ended, so it's up to the administrative review of that request.
That's in 10 years? That's in ten years?
After the ten years have passed.
It's ten years, the amortization period is ten years, and then if you're forty to ten years, the property owner may request an additional amount, but not.
If, say we, if we were to follow through with the amortization period, then we would have to be sending notices every year for five years to that property owner to notice them of what's going on, and then that would give them the opportunity to submit a request for an extension.
All right, Councilmember Mouse?
So piggybacking off of that, if, for instance, example, Equestrian Center and then the business on Ninth Street, they can continue with that same type business. Does it necessarily mean because they're zone housing, if they choose to move it on to another equestrian center, they can do that, correct?
So the property, the, the equestrian center, it's already zoned residential, and it's going to continue to be zoned residential. So there's really no change that is going to be occurring on that site. It's, all the, all the land uses that are permitted today are going to be permitted tomorrow, except for that, except for the lower zoning.
Correct, but if they have change of business and they want to sell to another
Then another one could buy it.
They're still under that nonconformity.
Yeah, if they wanted to change, if they want to sell, or maybe if someone else wants to operate the horse stables, then they could do that.
Okay. Thank you.
And with respect to the business on Ninth, I think we addressed that earlier. The zoning that we're proposing to put on that property, the extension of the business residential mixed use, that would, that business that's there now, it's a contractor's office and yard, that would remain conforming, conforming use. But at some point, residential development could be put on that property as well. And so that solves the issue that was in the letter about changing zoning to a multifamily residential use, and then creating a nonconforming situation.
Okay, all right. So shall we hold a public hearing? All right, let's hold a public hearing. Madam Clerk?
And just to note for the record, we had five letters of opposition to the, the rezoning and one in support, and those were forwarded to you earlier today.
Thank you.
I have fourteen speakers for the public hearing. You have to announce it.
Yeah, this, you'll have three minutes each on your presentations, okay? Thank you.
So first we have Joseph Angioli, followed by Eloise Pro.
Mayor, City Council. When I was sent, I got a postcard from you folks, and I first looked at it and I thought to myself, I did a little bit of math, and it came to me in this way. You're going from twenty-five units per acre to forty. That is a increase from seventeen hundred and forty-two square feet in land use to ten eighty-nine at forty per unit. That is a sixty-two percent increase in land use alone. We're not talking about the issues of parking, infrastructure that may need to be supported by it. Recently, where I live, I have parking enforcement driving up and down the street constantly with cars parked, not in where they're supposed to be at their apartments, but on the street for days. I mean, you all live in this town. We're becoming a, a city of renters and landlords, and it looks like it's going to continue even further. I mean, Sacramento's a long way from Upland, and that's a real problem for me. These people got their boot on our necks, and we have to do what they gotta do. From what I can see, we're experiencing a downturn in population. Me being a boomer, and which you, many of you are the same, you know, we're not going to have, we're seeing a downturn. You drive the streets in this town, you see for sale signs, you see open houses, you see vacancies. That's what we're experiencing right now. And yet they want to put thousands of more units on the street? I mean, let's, let's use our heads a little bit here. This doesn't make any sense. The future is not with a greater population. When the boomers go gone, they're, they're going to lose, they're going to be a lot of empty houses around. That's just the way it is. And I'm concerned about parking. And there's just a few things that, that bother me about this whole thing. I mean, I got to drive these streets in my town, so do you. I mean, it just doesn't work. Anyway, that's all I have to say, but you see the city of gracious living there? If you consider these densities, it'll be the city of chaos. Thank you.
Next is Eloise Pro, followed by Louis Pro.
Mayor, Mayor, City Council members, we are here at this meeting for two different reasons. You're here to vote to rezone land parcels, and we're here to oppose the development of townhomes on Arrow Highway in San Antonio, you know, literally in our backyard. The pro here is more money for Upland and the developers, and the negative are, would be our home depreciation, more cost to sell our homes, environmental, increased noise, traffic pollution, and the loss of our privacy. This is literally in our backyards. So if you put up the three story condos, we're gonna, they're literally going to be looking into our backyard. So, so loss of privacy, loss of, well, environmental, increased noise, traffic pollution, the loss of our privacy, loss of neighborhood continuity, and increased property taxes, increased utility support, infrastructure costs, I don't know if it's related, but it could be, overcrowding of our schools and parking issues. It would be better if we had single homes instead of an outgrowth of townhomes in the middle of a single home community. As our representatives, please take into account how we, we will be affected in all our aspects of our lives by this backyard development. Thank you.
After Louis Pro is Christine Turrentine.
Hi, my name is Louis. I've been living here in Upland for forty-six years. I saw, when I moved in, there were orange groves across the street from Arrow from where I lived. And now there's apartments and condominiums. They park all around the streets in my neighborhood. It's a lot of congestion. And so now we're going to add to that. And what we're doing here is putting four stories in one area, three stories in another, two in another, and in some areas, no, you just, your lot size is going to be different. You, we are not going to build four stories in your area, just in this area over here. Well, if, if I understand that you need more units, and you're forced to put more units, why don't you divide it up equally? Two stories or three stories everywhere, everywhere, not four in one, and none in another, and three in another, and put them right up against people's backyards? So they lose their privacy and just lose out overall. Inequity in your house is going to go down. Everything about this is negative. You wouldn't want that in your backyard, so you should think about it that way, and think about doing everything equally. Not like I said, I'm repeating myself, but four stories in one area, and just, we'll just change the lot size for you guys. You, you can stay just the way you are. We're gonna really let these guys over here have it. So that to me is not fair at all, and I do understand you need more units in Upland. You're forced to. But fair is fair, and you can't just let one area go and another area get four stories in their backyard. Thank you.
After Christine Turrentine is Joe Ramos.
Good evening, council members, and Bill. Hey, Bill, how are you? First of all, I had to revise my little statement that I have here because Bill corrected me. I didn't have updated information. I'm one of the gossip spreaders that, because Bill and I had conversations last year, and he did indicate to me that he and his firm were representing the seller at that time, and suggested that he had to recuse himself. So if the situation changed, we got it.
I'll be clear.
So we're good. Fist pump. But revision to my statement, and I'm glad to hear that everybody's in consensus with RM forty was not necessarily a good designation for this particular property. It is very unique. It's not on a main thoroughfare. There's literally no street access to this property whatsoever right now. It is landlocked, surrounded on all four sides by single story, single member, single family homes. They'll have to turn, tail down two of the cutest homes on Arrow Highway just to gain access to the property. The level, the sheer level of density is not appropriate for this particular lot. One of the reasons that is not is specifically for privacy reasons, for environmental reasons, for the outlying area. If I look at my backyard based on the plans that are submitted, I won't see the sun until eleven o'clock in the morning if there's a three story unit behind my house. And I'm not exaggerating. There's going to be cars parked right up against my back wall to my backyard. My grandchildren won't be able to play in the backyard because of the parking permit right against my wall. My wall's only five foot tall. I do live in one of these older neighborhoods with existing infrastructure. Not only that, the noise, the light from this size of a complex in this area just wouldn't be appropriate for this particular piece of land. I can understand and appreciate the need for more growth and the need for more density. This piece of property just does not meet those standards. All of these homes, twelve to fourteen hundred square feet, they're all single story. They're all on seventy-five hundred square feet land sizes, not even ten. Ten seems reasonable for no, North Upland people, but for us down there, we're squeezing a little bit of house, on a little bit of land, and we're going to be towered. It's going to be like the movie Up, the little old man with the skyscrapers beside him. It's going to be like that poor little Victorian house on San Antonio that were permitted to have three story townhomes built right next to it, which they barely just sold for, I believe, what was it, six hundred? They had to knock down the price on it, fifty thousand dollars. Please take it into consideration. RM twenty would be better.
Next is Joe Ramos, followed by Cecilia Milner.
My name is Joe Ramos. I live at twenty seventy-five North First Avenue. I'm here in reference to the Twenty First and Campus property. And I'd like to say I spent twenty years both on the Architectural and Planning Commission here, so I've been through this process before quite, quite a few times, and understand the predicaments that the city runs into in, in, in the process. But I really want to express our appreciation to the staff and the Planning Commission for listening to us and what our concerns were. And I think, you know, we're willing to go with what is proposed at this point because it still somewhat maintains the fabric of our community. And I've lived in that property coming on fifty years now, and I've been a resident of the city for seventy-nine years. So I've seen the developments growing up throughout the years, and like I said, we're always put in this predicament every time we're dealing with a general plan, dealing with a housing element and other issues. I only ask one other thing that should be considered in our area where we are above Sixteenth and east of Euclid, is we have no parks. There is no open space. We used to have a ten, ten acre parcel, a school and park site up there, but that was sold to Louis, and there is nothing. And Euclid, in some cases, is more of a barrier than it is a buffer. So in the consideration of this property being sold, even though we're going to an R ten, you know, open space or Vest Park at Park or something would really be appreciated, but that'll come later, I'm sure, when the staff is confronted with the developer coming in and making his proposals. But I do want to appreciate, at least express our appreciation to the staff for the work that went in with Josh and the Planning Commission, because I think they did hear us. We're concerned, I'm really concerned with the other parts of this city as well, because I agree with what is being said on the southern part of the city, because it's, it's really an impact. Like I said, I've been through that before. I understand the predicaments, and it, it's not fair, unfortunately. But again, thank you for your time, and again, I just want to express the thank you to the staff and, and the other people in the city in helping us through this process, because they did listen to us, and we're willing to compromise with what's being proposed. Thank you very much.
After Cecilia Milner is Bob Milner.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for hearing us out today. Obviously, I'm one of the ones that live in the property over near the San Antonio and Arrow Highway. You know, I'm really happy that the people on Twenty Second Street are, are happy with your compromise. The thing about it is, is they feel heard. We don't feel heard. We don't feel heard. There's only, I don't know, maybe a dozen of us that will be very largely impacted by this. However, like they've said over and over, you're talking single family residents on seven point five lot. They're willing to accept twenty. I'm like, no, even that's going to be huge in our backyard. I look at that, right across the street from the IHOP where they put that property, and I look at it, and I'm like, is that what I'm looking at in my backyard when this is accept, considered to be acceptable? I, I lose my privacy. I lose, I lose my value in my home. It, it's not consistent with the neighborhood. There's projects, I looked at your different projects. I'm like, okay, that's surrounded by industrial, that makes sense. That's surrounded by other businesses, that makes sense. That's surrounded by the transit lines, that makes sense. Putting this in our backyard does not make sense. It does not make sense. Thank you.
Next is Bob Milner, followed by Louis Tiki Dieter.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate your time up here. I just wanted to basically jump on the same, not, not bandwagon, the same conversation that my wife just had. We share the same concerns. We bounced around a little bit. I spent a little bit of time down here. I got to meet Josh and spoke with him on a couple of different occasions. We started out, we became residents eight years ago, and I took a look, and I knew, like I said the last time, knew that that land needed to be developed, but all around single family dwellings, all around that whole thing. So not in my wildest dreams did I think that we could have anything that was going to be built up there that could go to four stories tall, three to four stories tall. And if it's three stories, from what I understand, thirty feet away from the property line. Two stories, fourteen feet away from the property line. Fourteen feet is where the proposal of this, of this sale of this property is not even from here to there. And two stories is all the way up past this roof over the city of gracious living sign. That's kind of crazy. That looks into our backyard. It impedes on the privacy of what we have going on at this point in time. And it, it just is, I, it's, it's beyond what I have. So we went, anyway, so we go to forty. So, and last time, so at the end, we say, okay, well, let's go to thirty, and I appreciate you speaking up over here, go to thirty. Then we said, well, that, does that still involve three story tall buildings? Yes, it does. And that would be thirty feet away from the property line, and the two story buildings, which is fourteen feet away, which I got when I came here, when I talked to the planning committee. Now, if they do something like that, and now, what I, I just brought that fact up to our mayor, and he said, he comes back, and we went to thirty, and went over here, and it said, okay, when we go to thirty, well, that should still, the sale still should be, go down because of, on the property. And now I just talked to my new friend from New Jersey, and as he came back over here and said to me, well, that property isn't going to be zoned for RM thirty, we're going to zone it for RM twenty. I can go with that, RM twenty, and I'm sure the other residents can do that. But if you go with RM twenty, that proposed property that is for sale has a hundred and thirty-eight units, if it's, if that's what the case is, and I hope what you said was true, it'll go down to RM twenty, that's what you proposed, then that only adds up to a hundred and twenty. So anyway, I'm not real sure what. So anyway, I'm not real sure what direction we're going in. We went from 40 to 30 to 20, and we'll see where we're at. And I hope your word sounds true. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Next is Lois Sicking-Deter, followed by Charles Adamson.
Good evening, Honorable City Council. My name is Lois Sicking-Deter. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the Housing Element rezoning plan, specifically the rezoning of the parcel at 21st and Campus. As a member of the North Upland Citizens Group, we understand the mandate coming out of Sacramento and the associated constraints. Every parcel, property owner in Upland will be affected. On July 23rd, we expressed our concerns and opposition to the initial proposal of reducing the RS 20 zoning to an RS 4, that is, from a 20,000-square-foot lot to a 4,000-square-foot lot. 29 Upland residents spoke in opposition to this rezoning plan, the majority questioning the proposal on the 21st and Campus parcel, again, from an RS 20 to an RS 4. Our concerns include that we are in a high-risk fire area and have frequent power shut-offs. A higher RS density will pose increased risk with traffic, infrastructure, and safety exacerbated during a wildland fire. In addition to damaging properties, wildland fire can also cut off access to utilities, emergency services, impact evacuation routes, and may impact the overall economic well-being of an area. Overall, Upland has a high, has a major risk of wildfire over the next 30 years, and this is referenced from the Upland Fire Hazard Map online. We feel that the Planning Commission heard us and voted unanimously to recommend adoption to the Upland City Council for an amended resolution to include that the parcel at 21st and Campus be rezoned to an RS 10, not RS 4 as initially proposed. And this is what we're asking for you to approve this evening. Thank you again, Lois Sicking-Deter.
Next is Charles Adamson, followed by Paulette Feeney.
Well, my name is Charles Adamson. I live around the corner from the 502 East 21st Street property that was just being discussed. Most everything's been said. I think that I also encourage the council to approve the revised proposal from the Planning Commission for RS 10. There are other RS 10 lots in the immediate proximity there. But I would like to point out that in your blurb on page 286 of the agenda, the, I'm going to quote the second paragraph there, "The site proximity to the Colony's Crossroads Shopping Center makes for an ideal location for additional housing opportunities north of the 210." Well, that's generally when you're looking for walkable shopping, mass transit, that sort of thing. It's 1.2 miles from that property to the Albertsons, which is about in the middle of the Colony shopping area. And those streets are not safe for pedestrians. We're talking about Campus, which has no sidewalks. We're talking about 20th, which has a partial sidewalk in front of the car dealership, and then the underpass of the freeway. So I think that the blurb in that page is a little bit misleading, that that property is a great place for high density because of its proximity to the Colonies. It really isn't. It's on the edge of a wilderness area. Fire was mentioned. And that Edison right-of-way, they do maintain it, but it has brush, so you have an increased fire hazard along that area. And the infrastructure just really isn't there for the RS 4 type of density. I think we all agree we can accept the RS 10, and I encourage the council to vote for that proposal. Thank you.
Next is Paulette Feeney, followed by Dan Sanderlin.
Good evening. Nice to see you all again. My name is Paulette Feeney. I've lived in my home on Arrow Highway for over 30 years, so I'm obviously here to speak about the rezoning issue. They say you can't fight City Hall, but I'm going to die trying. I'd like to thank Mr. Garcia, Mr. Brightling, Mr. Winter, and Ms. Ferris for meeting with me at my home to see firsthand how this will affect us. This process makes me angry and sad. When you're invited to a public hearing, there's an expectation for presentation of ideas, weighing inputs, then making a decision on the vote. That that is not the case, that the vote is pretty much a done deal, is provoking. Yes, we in my neighborhood are being listened to, but we are not being heard. Initially, I was under the impression that this would allow for a certain percentage of low-income housing, and I was forced to personally weigh my concerns against those of the greater good. Now, I find out that we do not have that percentage guaranteed for lower-income housing. I learned that the high-density zoning only allows for the appearance of a possibility for low-income housing. Also, there is a high probability of private equity firms snatching up these units, which will create higher-priced rental units, which is another set of problems. I was told I do not own the view. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm aware of that. Fair enough. But someone will be buying this view. Someone will be selling this view. I can guarantee you that the units on the north side of this property will have a much higher price point than those on the south side of the property, which have a view into my bedroom window. I almost broke down into tears when I heard that two more houses, three doors down from me, were going to be demolished. High-density units will be right there on my street. This is where we walk our dogs, where we take our morning strolls and our evening strolls. The very nature of my neighborhood is changed. The view of nature is being destroyed. I know all the issues of the traffic and the services and the privacy. We're being asked to trust a lot, that there will not be adverse effects. Sorry, I'm running out of time. I remain skeptical. I know if you lived where I do, you would not approve this project in your backyard. And by the way, I'm not happy that specific students were dismissed.
Thank you.
Before they were able to hear about what will happen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Don Sanderlin, followed by Travis Van Lighten.
Hi, my name is Don Sanderlin. I reside at 360 Lexington Street, and my house abuts up against the Greystone or the stables. And we've lived there about 31 years. First off, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission. They were very thoughtful and thorough and listened to everybody's concerns. I have been told about, every time this comes up, Josh and other people tell me, this is all in theory, it's really not going to happen, they just need the numbers. And that's not how I see it. Because if a developer sees that property with a zoning of an R4 or an R20, they're going to purchase that based on, hey, I can build that and make all that money, then come in, try to pass it through the city council. And that's a pretty good argument they got. City already passed it. What, you know, why are you going to change it now on me? So that's a main concern I have with all of this rezoning. And with that, I want to tell you that I urge you to vote for our R10. And on a side note, the communication we get from the city, you know, back in the day when everybody had a news, bought the newspaper and, and, you know, you have to put the article, the city has to put that thing in the paper to notify people and 300 feet, you know, my neighborhood, nobody seemed to know this was even going on. I walked the neighborhood, and that's how everybody found out about it. And I'm sure that's how these people back here found out about it. You know, word of mouth, there's got to be better communication somehow from the city to our residents. So again, I just urge you to vote in the positive for the R10 change. Thank you.
Next is Travis Van Lighten, followed by Jack Imberto.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members. My name is Travis Van Lighten. I'm an attorney representing Red Crow Properties, the owner of the property at 1500 West 9th Street, which was previously discussed during the slideshow as being potentially modified to the BRMU designation. First off, we were, we're thanking staff for working with us and suggesting this potential solution to the problem that was identified. We are still looking at it, but we're cautiously optimistic that it would hopefully resolve a lot of our concerns. One point of clarity, I just want to make sure as we go through this process, that it is clear on the record that the city is going to be updating both the general plan designation as well as zoning code to accommodate the BRM use. You know, frankly, at the end of the day, you know, my client has been operating on this site, as was said, for over 24 years at this point in time. He has no intention of quitting his existing operations anytime in the near future. However, if ultimately the city is able to include a new zoning designation that potentially does allow for residential development if that need should ever arise, that's, there's no real issue there, provided the existing uses are protected. We will continue to work with staff to make sure that we iron out any specific details that might need to be ironed out. But with that, we just wanted to thank you, staff, as well as this council, for hearing our concerns and hopefully working towards a good solution here. Thank you very much.
Next is Jack Imberto, followed by Jimmy Pitts.
Good evening, Councilman. My name is Jack Imberton, and I'm in the middle of something. I own the property at 21st Street, and I'm here to support my neighbors. I bought it in 1988, and Peters was building the homes across on half-acre lots. And I, I know he's a very good builder and does a great job. And I looked at the neighborhood, and it was so upgraded, and I was very encouraged to buy the property. And I knew that it was a half-acre zoning. And I was content with it when I bought it then, and I'm still content with half-acre lots. At my age, I don't plan to develop it. I intend to keep it as long as I can. And I should only just have one question, one thing to state, is when you vote tonight, try to think of my neighbors, what you're doing for them. Most of them are here now, and let's keep their property values in mind, keep their way of living in mind. And whoever develops my property in the future, let's hope that they do likewise. That's all. Thank you.
Next is Jimmy Pitts, followed by Natasha Walton.
Mayor, before I start, I wanted to give props to Josh. After the Planning Commission meeting, I had asked a question, and I don't think the city attorney let him answer my question, but he came out right after the meeting. He hunted me down and answered the question. Just a shame, everybody else couldn't have heard the answer. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you to everyone for showing up tonight. We live a few properties away from Jack on 21st Street. We've lived there for 18 years. I've known the owner, Jack, and his family for many years. Jack has been a great neighbor, helping others in need in the area. And just recently, Jack allowed All-American Paving, who is paving first, second, and the other street down there, Lexington, to park their heavy equipment trucks on his property for no cost in order to reduce the amount of heavy traffic truck on the residential street. Personally, from a financial standpoint, I think Jack might be crazy. Don't tell him I said that. But if it gets rezoned, the more houses they put there, the higher value he could sell the property for. So why is he and his family here? Why are they attending the Planning Committee Commission? It's because he wants to do the right thing, as he stated, for the neighborhood. This shows the true character of the man. I will disagree with some of the other people who spoke earlier respectfully. Personally, I don't want more homes. I don't want 10,000-square-foot lots. The neighborhood is 20,000. The governor of the state want more properties. Okay, give them more, 20,000. I don't want more low-income. Okay? If you want to live in a low-income house, move to Arlanza Riverside, where I bought my first house cheap, or South Fontana, where I bought my second house, a little more expensive. That's where I bought my houses, and I saved, and I saved, and I worked, and my wife worked. And we were able to finally buy a house in Upland. I don't want to buy a house in Upland and then later have to leave because the neighborhood is impacted so heavily. Let's build some high-income houses in the area. I'm confident most of the like-minded people here tonight will agree that the Planning Commission did take a huge step forward by going with the 10,000. But it's my opinion, just keep the neighborhood as is and appease the state to some degree. Before we moved here, there was no In-N-Out, no AMPM, so development is going to happen. Let's just keep it somewhat contained. Keep the 20,000-square-foot lots, keep the neighborhood happy. Staff briefly spoke last time about Huntington Beach. I would just ask you to do your homework. I spoke to a friend of mine who's an employee at Huntington Beach today. It's not as bad as they say.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is Natasha Walton.
Good evening. My name is Natasha Walton. I am co-founder of People for Upland Parks. One of the things I want to keep, help, remind you about is that we're not against higher-density housing. We understand the impacts, and our population is growing. But one of the things we have to do is we have to plan for it properly and not just rezone things to higher-density housing. We also have to rezone for parkland. We have public property that could be rezoned for parkland, and that's going to disappear. Right now, we might have close to the ratio of what's required or what's suggested by the Quimby Act of amount of parkland per people. But we're going to be increasing our population. It's not going down. We know that. But we're going to be losing our public property as a result if we just zone those areas as high-density housing. We have enough private developers who are going to be coming in and developing their properties. But we also, you know, might have some people who might want to donate their land for parks. We also have, but we also have property that we own. We have downtown public land, parking lots. We're going to be building a five-level parking lot just a couple blocks south of here. But just north of that is a public parking lot that is not going to be turned into a parking lot, into a large parking lot. Make that into a park. We can't keep putting high-density city types of developments in our community and expect our community to still feel like a small town. We have to mitigate for that and put, keep parks in there so that at least we can balance the open space that we need so that we can put people together. There's New York with millions of people all put together, but they have Central Park. We need a park downtown. We need to develop Sycamore Park, 56 acres, into a passive park so that everybody can enjoy in the community. We were talking about that two years ago, and we had a couple million dollars that could do it as a passive park, but that hasn't been, come back. And there are people in District 1 and other districts who are losing their open spaces. So please consider that as part of the plan, part of the overall feeling for Upland, so that we can at least mitigate the high density that we're expecting. Thank you very much.
I don't have any additional speakers for the public hearing.
All right. Any speakers that didn't get a chance maybe to come up that wants to speak before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. All right. Council members, Shannon Mouse.
Bob, can you speak and clarify for the residents that we discussed? The HCD asked you all to look above the 210 freeway for parcels. The HCD asked you all to look above the 210 freeway for parcels, and it's because we needed to meet the quota for moderate to above moderate, meaning the two parcels above the 210 freeway chosen are not low-income housing, they're moderate to above moderate. We still have to meet all measurements from low to high.
That's correct. We have the four income categories that we have to meet, and then that adds up to the 56, 86. But in housing element law, and Joshua had mentioned this earlier, there is a requirement for, it's called FER, furthering for housing, or FFH. We had to do an analysis in the city of Upland for that, and so we were required to have higher-density zoning in North Upland so that you could have moderate and not just all above moderate or high, you know, the high end of above moderate. And that would allow us to allow moderate-income households to be in an area rather than putting all of the lower-income or moderate-income households in, concentrated in a certain area. So we require, we're required by that because of the FFH requirement and also because in working with HCD, that's what they had asked us to do.
And then on the contrary, the opposite?
Okay, real quick, we also, to accomplish that, did the ADU bonus program, and ADUs are considered, depending on where they are, but for the most part, they're considered moderate income. And so with the ADU bonus program, where lots that are over 15,000 square feet, they can have a second detached ADU, and that would also account for moderate income units. So we were able to do that without having to rezone other properties in North Upland.
Okay. And then opposite of that, why there is so much density in the lower part of our city is by HCD's ruling and the transient? If you could just elaborate a little bit on that, why they choose that area, say, versus mid-Upland or upper Upland?
Well, in the downtown, you generally have higher density, and we have, in the Citrus Transportation District, that allows for 55 to 15 acre, and that's because you have the train station there, and it's an urban environment, and you generally have higher-density housing in the urban environment. The areas to the east of that, those are all very old areas. Ninth Street at one point was a mixed-use corridor. At one point, it had residential, multifamily, even commercial uses. There was even a Circle K on one of the parcels back in the day. So there's a lot of opportunities on those properties that are underutilized and larger parcels where we can get low-income household income opportunities there and also moderate as well.
James, go ahead.
Thank you. Oh, can you hear me, Bob?
Yes.
Okay. The AA, I think I'm saying it wrong, but the AFFH?
Yeah.
Was that component included in the last housing cycle, or is this one new?
No, it's this, it's this cycle, and I think it was in the Housing Accountability Act when that was, yeah, there was about five years ago, I think, the HCD significantly changed housing element law.
That was a significant.
Housing Accountability Act, and that was, that was in there, and maybe if our consultants might want to expound on that.
Well, it wasn't in the last cycle. It's new for this cycle, so when you're looking at where you're putting the sites, hopefully you can hear.
Is that a mic on?
I think it's on. I'm just maybe quiet or too far away.
I have to speak up.
When you're looking at where you're putting the sites, there's a lot of different categories. So you're looking at, as Bob said, where you're close to transit. So HCD likes to think things where you're close to transit and where you're close to proximity to jobs, which are often the higher-density areas, the downtowns of cities. And then they're also looking for where places are more environmentally friendly. You want to make sure you're not concentrating all your lower income in one area, and sometimes those things kind of conflict, so it creates a tricky situation for where you're putting all your units. But the AFFH is a really expansive analysis. It's looking at concentrations of poverty, race, access to jobs, access to opportunities. So all of that is in there, and that is new for the sixth cycle.
Okay. I agree with the speaker, I'm sorry, I wrote every speaker's name down and with all my notes that are jumbled. I apologize, I know your name's on here, but you had mentioned about the distance to, like the Albertson's, I believe it was? And in the criteria, when determining the criteria, you had mentioned that, you know, you look at the proximity of grocery stores, for example, and I agree with you 100% that it's not walkable at all. That's not a very conducive path. It's, it is frustrating, but I'm going to ask another question that is related to this. Just down the road on 21st Street, at, there's another almost equally-sized parcel, the Shoe property, if I'm not mistaken. What is the difference between those two properties? Why was one selected and one, and one not selected?
So at the time, remember, we started this around 2020.
On that note, your housing inventory is important, right?
The Shoeys, and they were not interested in developing their property. Their property is split-zoned. The west half is owned 15,000 square foot lot, the east half is owned 20,000 square foot lots. So at the time that we were looking at our housing sites inventory, and we approached them, they were not interested in developing that site at all. And that site is in the middle, surrounded by 15,000 square foot lots, whereas the property on 21st and Compass is really at the edge of that entire area. So we felt if we were going to have a little bit higher zoning, it was more appropriate there than rather doing it in the middle of, you know, really low-density housing.
One more question slash comment.
Real quick, Josh reminded me, it's also designated prime agricultural land, and so HCD tends to not really want to rezone those kind of properties.
What about golf? I'm asking for some of the residents that had emailed me, what about, why is golf course land not considered? This was one of the residents.
Can you answer that question?
Explain that one. No, you're not going to be happy.
It would be, I mean, you would consider a golf course the same as you would consider other properties, so if you had a property owner interest, you might add it to your list. Typically, HCD is looking for parcels of a certain size, especially for lower to moderate-income housing. So a half an acre to 10 acres is usually about the size where you see housing development and lower-income housing development particularly. So a golf course is probably much larger than that, so maybe if you had a, like, it would be a little more complicated and difficult based on the size and the use, but, I mean, it's possible if there was an owner interest or you saw that. I mean, we've, we have worked on, Dan and I have worked on like 25 of these. We've seen golf courses, but they're just a little more difficult to include.
I believe in housing element law, anything over 10 acres cannot be considered anything less than above moderate.
Yep.
And also the Upper Hills Golf Course in a specific plan, and that whole golf course is designated golf course, so it's not designated for residential development.
Okay, so.
Should have been done, should have been done at the beginning, right, Bob?
That's correct, yeah.
And in the, when you were determining, because again, this process, to make it, put an analogy here, we're at the end of the dance, pretty much. This isn't the beginning of the dance, and I know many residents are, have shown and expressed frustration, at least from what I heard during the planning commission meeting, which I also attended. They were frustrated, they were saying that they didn't know about it, they didn't know about it. This has been a long, drawn-out process, and I know that initially the city held workshops when, I don't know if you were, that was during the inventory phase, but post the inventory phase, I think maybe for future reference, since within our, I'm thinking the next three or four years, we have to do this again, that workshops need to be continual, at least to remind, to keep everybody in the loop as to where we are. So once you do the inventory, then you submit that proposal, you send it to Sacramento. Sacramento either kicks it down back saying no or approves it, which in our cases, they kicked it down five times. So during those processes, I think to keep the residents better informed moving forward in the next cycle, that we make sure that we keep engaging the residents, not just at the beginning, but keep with the workshops, you know, hey, this is an update, once a year update, something, and then it's up to the residents whether you want to show up or not, but at least offer it to them.
Had we known it would take five drafts to get through HCD, that would have been something that we could have done, but we did, we did do the noticing for, there were, I think, five properties that we felt we should do an individual 300-foot radius.
Right.
Because of the potential opposition on that, we notified all of the property owners that are on the housing sites inventory.
No, and you have.
What was going on.
Absolutely.
So had we known it was going to take this long, we would have done that.
I'm just saying, for future reference, looking down the road, let's maybe, if we take that approach, that might be a little bit more helpful. I'm going to hold off the rest of my comments. I have some more, but I want to hear some other council members speak first.
Carlos, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Couple of questions. So let's say in the perfect world, we reach these numbers, we have them, right? We're still in limbo for the next cycle that they can ask for additional, even though this is what our target numbers are, and we met them, they can come back and say, I want double that or less than that and so forth. That's one question I have, correct?
They could, oh, I can take that one. They could, but everything that you're doing now will count to your next cycle. So if the numbers go up, you don't have to start over, you can start from where you are now.
Okay. The other question I had too is, and some of the residents have spoke, Ms. Feeny, I don't know where you're at right now, but talked about having been listened to but not really heard. So I want to let you know, as we're talking about this in the property, nothing has been set in stone when we do have a developer, and you're hearing this from me directly, that we're going to make sure that our residents, we're going to have workshops, public workshops, where you can come and talk to whoever the developer is going to be, so you can voice your opinions directly to the developer, and I think that's fair enough for you guys, so they can hear it from you directly as well.
So they're going to drop off a.
Please, no comment from the audience, please. No comment from the audience.
So.
All right. Go ahead, Carlos.
Yeah, so having said that, that's something that we're going to be looking at in the future as well too, correct?
That's correct. We're going to look at the project, its compatibility with the surrounding residents.
Thank you. Tim, there.
I think, Carlos, you were talking about development agreements. Am I correct, Bob? When a developer comes in.
We're just talking about through the development process.
Right.
When we take a look at the initial design of a project, and then we take a look at our code, and also, you know, good planning concepts in terms of compatibility, that kind of thing.
We take, we take everything concerned. Okay.
Well, with that property on Arrow Highway, but could we request from the developer to build a new wall all the way around so that, some of the residents said they have five-foot walls and.
Yeah, we're going to require that anyway.
So we will require a higher wall.
And there'll be a perimeter landscape buffer around the entire site as well.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, James.
That was exactly the reason why I wanted to hold off on my comment, because that's exactly what I was going to say. To Mrs. Feeny, thank you for your invitation to your home, and, you know, I appreciated the insight of being able to see the potential impacts, and I also, and this was exactly to Carlos's point, where I think, again, there's a disconnect is that during the meeting, Mrs. Feeny had made a comment, and Josh, I believe, was the one that had broken the news, saying, oh, that these two homes that are at the far end of the street are, have been sold and are part of, and to see her face was very disheartening because she didn't know that. She should have known that. All of the residents that are in that area should know this, so why, if the developer has the plans or if the staff has the initial planning, the initial plans, and I know they're subject to change, so posting them and saying, hey, we have them available, they're going to change, but it doesn't look like there's a, there's a benchmark to even start from. So the developer needs to do a meeting.
That is going to change. There are some issues that we have that's going to be refined. The process just basically started.
Right.
We're going to require the developer to have a meeting with the surrounding property owners, get their comments. We have the public hearing process that we normally go through, entitlements where they also have a chance to speak. So again, we're just starting this. And one thing I also want to mention that was also mentioned as well was about not having low-income housing. HCD looks at household income and density, and so if you have a zoning, a zoning that allows for 30 to 15 acre, HCD considers that equivalent to low-income housing. No covenants are required. We, you know, we don't have inclusionary zoning in our ordinance meeting. If a multifamily project comes, a certain percentage has to be low-income or has to be a certain income level. We don't have an inclusionary zoning in our, in our ordinance. However, when we are doing the housing element and looking at meeting those income levels, it's density that HCD determines meeting a certain income level. And as I mentioned, 30 to them is the equivalent to low-income housing, a low-income household.
Bob, the city ventures, what was their low-income housing? What was the price on that?
There was five that had to be at the 80% level, which is the maximum at low income, and there was, it was $400,000.
$400,000, so that, that's a pretty good number. It's not really low income, it's more medium.
It's all based on the, the area median income, so that's around $68,000 a year.
I bought my house for $125,000.
That was, they call it AMI.
A long time ago, wouldn't have been able to afford a house today for, at $400,000. I'm lucky I did that.
Carlos, you're up. You're down, Carlos, you're up.
Yeah, I think Al Simmons, I think I just asked my question, and I was going to say, what is, what is considered low income, you know, in their eyes?
Right, it's, it's 51 to 80% of the area median income or county median income, and in the county, somebody else, $68,000 a year.
Shannon, go ahead.
I just wanted to lend comments to say that, that I'm very empathetic and really respect what everyone shared today. I'm born and raised here, so 56 years, my first home, family home, was on Arrow Highway. It's now a gigantic apartment building, so I've seen what a lot of long-term residents have seen with building out. I'm very anti this process, and I've been on record all along saying, even though I, I'm forced to vote yes, but it just feels like a no. It's extremely upsetting. I'm very familiar with the entire city, top to bottom, and where it has landed, that legislators have taken away our local control for what we know. We know as long-term residents, council members, good executive staff, we should have control of our own neighborhoods. I talked to our Assemblyman on Friday, and, you know, he's upper legislation, and whatever side you're representing, if you follow all of this, trying to get them to vote for the people, they'll, they'll still say to us, well, we know we're, you know, it's eroding your local control, but this is the way the state of California is going. So it's not without trying. The city opposed, there's another bill out there, is it SB 74 or 79? 79, that would bring in seven, eight-story buildings near transit areas that came from a Representative Scott Weiner in Sacramento, and I was talking to the Assemblyman, saying, you know, one-size bill does not fit all, and that's what this is. It's gut-wrenching. I actually have a sick stomach right now over this, thinking about, you know, the neighborhood and the change of dynamic of it. It's not a fun place to be sitting here tonight. Maybe that will fall short because of the way we have to vote, because HCD is the housing police. They do call. They called them the next day after the planning commission meeting, and they're pushing us, and this has to get done, it has to get certified. Otherwise, the developers that we don't want come in with builder's remedy, and they'll preempt and make it even worse than what we have. So I'm very cognizant of that. It's not a good place to be sitting in, but I just really wanted to share that off my heart of living here for as long as I have, and I just appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Echo Shannon's sentiments. One of the most difficult things for us is to try to satisfy everyone. It's very difficult to satisfy the entire city, and I've spoke to many of yous in that area. I'm real direct and straightforward when I talk to you. I'm not going to play games, I'm going to tell you that we're being forced to do this. Not, we don't want to do this. I've lived here, Shannon's been here her whole life, I've been here for over 60 years. So when you talk about lemon grows, you talk about what used to be here, you know, just think back, if the residents, if the residents back then decided no, there probably wouldn't be as much North Upland. There wouldn't be the development on Northwest Upland, potentially wouldn't be north, it would have been all agriculture, potentially agriculture, you know, no colonies. And by the way, if it wasn't with the colonies, we would have been in a lot of financial trouble. So, you know, one of the most difficult things is how do we, as a council and as local representative, again, we're the lowest rung on that ladder. We don't get to, we talk to, I talk to congress members, assembly members, senators, and I constantly tell them, why do you put these burdens on us? Because we have to explain things to the residents, and the residents think we're lying to them. Folks, we don't lie. That's the one thing we've tried more than anything else to do, this council, in the last five to six, seven years, is to try to be as transparent as possible with this, with the residents. And there's people here that don't believe us because of, I'll be honest with you, it's called ignorance. I'm sorry. If you don't want to hear the truth, then what can we do? We can't lie to you because you can find out the facts. We're not lying to you. out the facts. We're not lying to you about anything we're getting forced to do. And that's the key. We have to tell you. I agree. Can we do more workshops? We've done workshops, we've had 10, 15 people show up. You know that? That's who show up. And it's the same 10, 15 people that come to each workshop. And then we get, when people come, say, "Well, I didn't get notice." We send out notices, don't we, Bob?
That's correct.
We send out notices. "I didn't get it in the mail." Okay, I understand. But we're not trying to hide anything, we're not trying to push anything down your throat, we're not trying to do anything other than what the state mandates. Regional Housing Needs Assessment, from, all the way from the state comes down. Guess where it ends up on? On us. So we gotta figure a way to meet that. And if we don't meet those needs, Bob, what are the consequences? What are some of the consequences?
Well, Councilmember Mosta indicated one onerous one, which is builder's remedy. And if we don't have a certified housing element, we're subject to that. And a builder can come in and build a higher-density property or development than what the property is zoned for. Also, at some point down the road, we could lose local control, which some cities, that's been their outcome. Also, if we apply for grants, we don't have a certified housing element, which is usually a requirement, we wouldn't be able to get that. So there was a handful of onerous things that could happen if we don't have a certified housing element.
So, you're all familiar with Grove and Foothill, aren't you? Ranch Cucamonga Project, right there in the corner. You know the city of Ranch Cucamonga could not stop that? City of Ranch Cucamonga could not stop that project, 'cause it was called by right. Am I correct, Bob?
Yeah, they used a recent bill that if they provided a conceptual plan and met the zoning, and there were no environmental impacts, that the ranch, basically, it met the standards, the rancher basically could not deny that project.
So, just think about that, what they're doing, taking away local control. So, it's important that you pick up the phone and call your state assembly members. Call your, you know, state senators. Pick up the phone. We do it all the time. We express to them, "Guys, you gotta help us here. This is not good." But guess what? We have to do something. If we don't, you're gonna be angry at us when somebody comes along in that development and builds 70 units per acre. By the way, they get a density bonus, Bob, don't they? 15%. Am I right?
Right. Depending on the percentage of income level, whether it's lower, moderate, or even senior housing, they can get a density bonus above what the maximum general plan and zoning density is.
So if the general plan zoning is 50, 55 per acre, what can they do?
Depending on the income percentage on the property, they can get a 35-plus bonus, density bonus.
Okay. So, there's so much stuff going on right now in the state of California, and there are 16,000 single-family residents in Upland, if you're aware of that. There are 125 for sale today. In 2008, the city of Fontana had over 2,000 homes for sale. Okay? So if you think there are a lot of homes for sale on the market, sadly mistaken. It's, interest rates are high. And when interest rates start coming down, what do you think's gonna happen? People are gonna ask more for their house, aren't they? See, it's all about, we call it, you know, you, what's creating this problem is the state of California is making it, what's it, difficult to build. They make it difficult to build. All we're trying to do is say, "Here, state of California, here's what you asked us to do. Now, it's up to the builder to come in and do what the planning department tells him to do, based on what we believe should be done, and based on your input." Now, are we gonna nail it every time correctly? Absolutely not. We're not. But what we are gonna do is we are listening. Some things we cannot change, and I'm sorry for that. It's very disappointing for me, when I gotta think about, three of my four children will never be able to afford a home in California, unless I give each one of them $300,000 to $400,000. Okay? So, I, one person responded to us today who was in favor of this, said, "I might be able to, with this type of zoning, my children may be able to buy a home in Upland now, and at least they can come visit me as I'm a grandparent." So, there is the flip side for all of it. We are hearing you. I do wanna say that the development on Arrow Highway should not be zoned any higher than RM 20. I think that's important. And the reason why I think that's important is because that's, I believe, what is planned, is what they wanna do. Am I correct?
It's just above...
Mayor, Council, I...
Okay.
Yeah, you're getting into the territory of discussing a specific project, which isn't before you. That time will come. So...
Well, we can still say RM 20. I can still say.
You could ask. I don't know if Bob's discussed that with...
We could change the ordinances and the housing sites for that listing. I think we're gonna lose, was it 36 units on our arena numbers if we go from RM 30 to 20? And so, it's up to the council. We have a bit of a buffer. It's gonna eat into that.
What percentage does that drop it?
Well, 36, right now, we made three changes. Two, recommended by the Planning Commission, and then the Ninth Street property. If we go to a lower density than that, then we're gonna lose 36 units, but I think our buffer will be less than 12%, right?
Yes, but I don't have the exact number. You're...
What's it taking down to, like, 11.8?
It'll be 11-something.
11.8. I can live with that. Is that fair?
Yeah. That's what's with the council.
I think that that's the issue here. I think that's fairly reasonable. Carlos, your district, what do you think? Okay. Is there a risk from HCD?
Well, you know, we proposed, or actually, the Planning Commission made two changes, and that was a discussion that we had at the meeting. Any change we make, there's a risk that we might get a pushback. So we're proposed, in what you have before you, there's three changes. Any other changes, it's unknown. This is kind of a smaller one, but it is reducing the density. There, you know, every change is additional risk. So it's hard to say what, how much HCD will get into the weeds.
You know, I'm sorry. I'm just...
Would it be, it's a risk of, that we can still try, and then it's a risk that they would come back and say, "No, it has to be this"?
We, you know, if that's the will of the council to go from RM 20, that's, it's against a risk, but we can obviously try that. If that's what you prefer, and we'll see what happens when we send, when we send all the ordinances and the changes to HCD for their review.
Okay. So would that take a... Carlos, go ahead.
Can we still keep discussing this, Thomas? That's my question.
Oh, yeah. No, right now, the council's discussing the underlying zoning rather than the project that's absolutely within the bounds. And I agree with Mr. Dalquest about, but there's risk, there's always risk. Any, the more you move it, the less units you're creating. But, you know, maybe we're within the buffer. I think if that's the council's will, you, last I checked, you still were in charge of the zoning for the city. So I think it's, if that's the will of the council, we'll push it.
Do this, you people gonna stick up for us and protect us if they show up and start wanting, if they wanna burn us? I think we should, I'm in favor of making that change.
So the only change we're making would be from RM 30 to RM 20, the general plan designation that we have on the site will remain, 'cause that would, the RM 20 and 30 fit within that umbrella of the general plan designation.
RM 20.
Right, we're changing. Right now, the property is owned public. We already have proposed for the site a general plan designation and a zoning designation, which is RM 30. I believe the existing general plan designation is okay, and by going to RM 20, I think we're still within the umbrella of that designation.
Okay. So, all right, so we got it. All right. Anything else?
Just want, actually, I just wanted to take a moment on behalf of the council, I think it's safe to say, I wanted to thank the Planning Commission for a good job that they had done at that meeting. I know it was almost a four-hour-long meeting, but the discussion was healthy, and the residents were heard. I think there were over 30 speakers. So just my thank you to the Planning Commission.
Carlos, anything? Shannon, anything? Rudy, anything? All right, so we just vote now with that change? Go ahead.
We were just looking at the general plan designation. It was medium, which allows from 20 to 30, for the RM 30. But if we go down to RM 20, we'll change the general plan designation to low, which is 10 to 20, 11 units per acre. So that site will have a general plan amendment, change from what we proposed, and then it'll be go to RM 20 instead of RM 30.
So it'll be a maximum of 20?
Yeah, maximum 20.
Okay, let's do that. All right. That change has been made.
Just for clarity, Bob, could you also state the change for the property on Ninth as well? What's, from the staff report and the resolutions in the package?
Right. So that property is going to change, we were, what was in the packet was RM 30. That's multiple-family, 30, 11 units per acre. And the general plan designation was, I think, it was medium. And we're going to change that to business residential mixed use, and the general plan zoning over the same name. So it'll be changed to business residential mixed use for the general plan and for the zoning.
Thank you. Just for clarity for the motion.
As well as Part III is 21st and Campus, that's changed, right?
They're already, the changes recommended by the Planning Commission were included by staff in the package for tonight's meeting. So those two, the 21st and Campus, I can't remember the other one that was changed by the Planning Commission, but that's included by staff already.
Okay, thanks.
Council, any more questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, let's go on for a motion. So we're gonna have it, we're not gonna have one vote, correct?
Yes, you can have one vote.
One vote.
But I will need to read the title of both ordinances.
Please read it.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Upland, California, approving zone change number 23-0001, to change the zoning designations of properties shown in Exhibit A, and approving zone code text amendment number 25-0003, to amend the Upland Municipal Code, UMC Section 17.04, 17.05, and 17.09, as shown in Exhibit B, C, and D, respectively. The second ordinance is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Upland, California, adopting specific plan amendment number 23-0001, to modify the district designation of 530, East Ninth Street, APN 1046-582-07, from Pleasant View District to Citrus Transportation District, as shown in Exhibit A to the resolution, and to increase the permitted residential density within the multifamily senior housing district from 25 DU AC to 40 DU AC, as shown in Exhibit B.
Do we have a motion? It's still moved by Councilmember...
With the addition of the property that we discussed on Arrow, which the new general plan designation proposed will be multifamily residential low, and the zoning would be multifamily RM 20.
And the one on Ninth Street?
And the one on Ninth Street will be changed to, the general plan and zoning would be business residential mixed use.
Councilmember Breiling, so moved. You have a second? Councilmember Garcia, let's vote. That passed unanimously. We're done. If you wanna stick around, if you wanna stick around for the rest of the boring meeting, you're welcome. Thank you, folks, for coming. Council, we're not on recess. Please, folks, if you're gonna leave the building, please, Claire, we have to finish up city council business, okay? This guy here, looks like he's lost.
Oh, my balls, sorry.
I'm getting rescued. They're all... I went from pitchforks. Yeah, I did call it ignorant. You know I was calling ignorant. Yeah, I did. Right in her face, I looked right at her. Hey, Jim, you can move up.
I did.
We've given you a front-row seat, my friend. When you were in school, you never sat in the front, right? Yeah, I was in the front, I was in the back in the beginning, 'cause my inveto, and by the time, second-day class, I was in the front. Yeah, yeah. That kid says everything. Okay. Council committee reports. Anything? Other than, folks, if you wanna have some good time, I encourage you to attend IEUA meeting in Lennepire's Utility Agency. I have been pushing for them to... No, I attend it. I've been pressed upon them to build separately. Not, we get it as a pass-through, right, Stephen? So I've asked them, myself and a few other cities have asked for it to be as a pass-through. And the ones that were apprehensive were concerned that they would lose the interest. How much interest, Mr. Parker, could we lose by doing that? Is there like a whole bunch? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. So, that's one of the things we're trying to do is, so instead of the residents seeing increase in sewage and fees coming from Upland, that's on our bill, I want it to come from Lennepire Utility Agency. They're elected officials, and they deserve to feel a little bit of the pain that we feel, when we're trying to explain to residents, it's not the city of Upland. So I made that very clear, they're working on that. And Chino Basin Water Master, right now, they're going through the safe yield. What that means is the amount of water that we're allowed to take out of the ground. And the numbers haven't come out. If it comes out that we could take less, it could be, impact us, our water rates could go up. If not, we should be okay. Mr. Nichols? So we're lucky we have Nicole Demote. She's very good at explaining, making sure that I'm briefed, and before I go to the meetings with Chino Basin Water Master, Lennepire's Utility Agency, and the WFA. So she briefs me on what some of the concerns are. And I will admit this, our staff here at the city of Upland does an outstanding job, and I'll come back on that in my comments in a few minutes, okay? That's my committee reports. Anybody else? Oh, at the SBC TA. Yeah, we voted, they were voted down the additional 37 million towards the MetroLink goal line from Pomona to Montclair, which they anticipated would cost about $200 million at the end there. So what we've requested, and I sat in for my colleague here, Mayor Protam, was that we recommended that they take the additional funding and find ways to increase the flow. Problem is MetroLink, excuse me, the LA section probably will not want to increase the amount of trips. So hopefully, sometime in the future, we may see the goal line, but we can never get the goal line through Upland. We don't have the width where our tracks are. So it ended in Montclair, anyway. The idea behind it was having that transit there. They were gonna build, you know, huge parking structures, and they can still do it, if they do it right. And those are the committee meetings, and also OmniTrans. Again, OmniTrans, not a whole bunch changing at OmniTrans. We're lucky we have that little special bus that you can call in Upland, and they'll pick you up. We're one of the few cities, Upland, Bloomington, I believe, I wanna say Chino Hills, we have a direct, you can call, and they'll pick you up, usually at, like, at the end of the street. So, guys, we're, you know, what's going on in our community, in these regional meetings, and what they're trying to do, a lot of stuff we don't have to say over. East Valley, cities are not as open, even though the West End. And also, the Homeless Outreach Center, Mike, is coming along, right? That we go to that meeting, too.
Yes, in partnership with the county. The county's putting up $20 million in capital to build a homeless shelter in Fontana, which we will participate in as a participating agencies.
And we actually set the money aside. We already voted on setting the money aside, which is beneficial to us. 200 beds, and our impact team, along with the life chief, it's called Quality Life Team. So the Quality Life Team in Upland has been off the hook, doing a great job. We get a lot of kudos from other cities when we're down there. Our animal shelter, believe it or not, they're building a co-op between Chino, Chino Hills, who are those now?
Ontario's building it and partnering with Chino and Chino Hills.
Yeah. They're gonna have their own animal shelter. So we're ahead of a lot of cities with what we're doing right now. We're... We're much ahead, so that's kind of a good thing. All right.
Question on the Omni, is there, are there any discussions for the east-west Foothill corridor for the bus stops? Because we have, I think, one in the entire city that actually is covered, the rest of them, it's just a concrete?
We talked about that, we sent an email to them, we're gonna look into it. We just gotta stay on top of about it. Because they did have some new, wait, they are, I think they are gonna be putting them in. I think they are, because there was a discussion about one at Central and Foothill, and we had mentioned that it needed to have a top on it. So I think there was already some sort of a plan to do it. So I'll follow up next time I'm there. All right, no business items to cover? All right, let's move on to council communications. Rudy, you're up. Rudy's got nothing.
You know what? I'd like to thank staff for the presentation they had put together out there with the Army. I know it's a lot of work and all the staff time and hours to put that together, so thank you guys all, the police, everybody that came together and put that out there for us. Thank you.
Go ahead, James.
No comment this time, thank you.
We did a lot of talking. Shannon?
I'll echo Mayor Protem Zuniga's comments, and I'll also add Mr. Arula and your department for keeping up with pace with the demand of customer service in the city. Thank you for all that you're doing. I get late-night emails from you, I know you're going all the time, really appreciate it, and the residents do, too. Thank you.
Carlos?
Just briefly, I wanna thank Stephen Parker for all the hard work, man, that made Pace happen. Also, I wanna thank Mike again for making this and just taking it one step further for our veterans, man. So I know you put a lot of hard and effort into all of our meetings, so I appreciate that. Thanks.
So, you know, today we had the Army today, and I thought it was really great, and I'd like for us to find a way to include the rest of them, too. I think it'd be great if we did, if we were one of the first cities, now, is it Pace only for the Army? Let's work on the other ones, because I feel like to be the only city that encompasses all of it. But I do wanna make sure that the chief, Darren, excuse me, Damian, is given accolades, Stephen, and you know what? I think in the years I've been here, development services comes, what they have to go through sometimes, and they're just doing what they need to do. I mean, I know the police get their fair share, Public Works, we all get our fair share, but I wanted to recognize Bob Dalquest and his team tonight for what they have to go through to meet the needs of things that are out of their hands. And not that all the rest of our directors don't have to, and the chief police, but I think tonight Bob's team deserves special accolades. Came out of this winner. I think we came, this, tonight ended up being a win for us. I think we listened, we heard what they said, we made it clear, and I think there was only one ignorant person in the audience, but that's okay. The rest of them were, had some nice, positive things to say. So, anyway, that's all I have. City manager?
Yeah, I was just gonna echo that, especially with Joshua Winter and Laura Lee Ferris on this housing element. This is a heavy, heavy lift, and I'm glad it's only done every eight years, because it's a lot, you know, and I would challenge anybody to try and fit 5,600 housing units into the very, very few parcels we have left in this town. And so, thank you to Josh for a fantastic job.
Bob didn't get to hear it.
Did Bob didn't get to hear it?
He can watch the video.
Okay, well, thank you. I'll just have to move it to the end of the meeting on the video.
No, wait, listen to the whole thing. All right. Okay, so, hearing, no order. Thank you to the City Attorney Rice for being here tonight. I understand you're gonna be here a little bit more. We're excited to hear that. You're an enjoyable, turn that around. So, Thomas Rice will be joining us, he's our assistant city manager. Thank you, Thomas. So we are going to be adjourned now to the next scheduled city council meeting, Monday 7/22, September 22nd. Mike, you're adjourned.